...in official removal.
It sounds like what we would hear from the county would be that they wanted it left in the major street plan, correct in what they were saying?
I mean, and I think that's what Mr. Barcliffe said. I think it's just where do we get it from? Is it all 50 feet from? And I'm, I'm gonna let, you know, the owner of Alabama Pecan, the property owner, obviously, that's his call. You know, it's his property.
Yeah, the challenge was, would be, you know, if you, if you fast-forwarded 30 years down the road and all this area was built out, and you only had a 50-foot right-of-way, and you built a little two-lane road from there, there would be no room to have any type of buffer from the back of those fences to the road. So, we get into this oftentimes in, in, in the city when we deal with the properties, where, you know, that less squeezing that right-of-way actually produces a less desirable result. So, it, it, I mean, it's a tough trade-off, where, you know, if you had more right-of-way, you can provide those buffers, you know.
Correct. And that, you know, that was one part of the conversation with the county is that, you know, this thing shows up to be a 100-foot right-of-way. Obviously, it was identified as a major corridor. And so, you know, sort of the 50-50 split, however it goes down, but now we're, we're willing to reduce it to 50 feet with half, with that right-of-way line, like you said, being right up against the back of a bunch of platted lots. You know, and, you know, part of even the discussion Friday with, with the county was, is that they may even be willing to let us look at putting lots along that road for driveway access. I mean, so, sort of the major street component of that sort of goes away, because now we're looking more at a 50-foot residential street with potential driveways and so forth. I mean, so, does that really project the major street plan of, you know, trying to divert traffic or move traffic or whatever the case may be? I mean, and then the reality of, hey, it may be 25 or 50 years before we ever get there, or it may never happen at all. And so, you know, it's just a, now it's a 25-foot wide strip, a 50-foot wide strip, 100-foot wide, you know, I mean, it's just sort of sitting there in limbo until something gets to that point. So...
From, from the proposed subdivision, it doesn't look, subdivision of the parcel, it doesn't look like there's a planned, you know, major subdivision. It looks like just four large, large lots.
Correct. So, Alabama, the way this thing works, and this is the step one, and one will eventually be a major subdivision. So, Alabama Pecan is doing this four-lot division with the, the larger lot being Lot 3. That property will then be developed. So, Redlands Phase 1, that's on the agenda, and Redlands Phase 2, that's the first two phases of the major subdivision that goes through there. So, that's where that is. But obviously, you know, we're totally ready to hold that over today, because we gotta get an answer on this before we can go any further.
Is the thoughts that Lot 1 would likely become commercial?
I would assume, I'm, you know, I'm, once that piece goes out, I don't know what, you know.
So, if we, you know, if this is truly a major street for the future, the lot, the road's not gonna line up. If we take all the right-of-way off the west, I guess that's east, then that intersection's gonna have to be realigned as well.
We're not taking all of it, 'cause we're, well, if we were to say 50 feet, that's only taking half of it.
Well, if you're saying you're not taking any, if you're not, you know, typically you would take half and half. But if you're not gonna take any from this half, and you're gonna take it off from that half, then you have Eliza Jordan Road that's not gonna line up correctly once it gets south of Airport. Am I correct?
Well, there would have to be modifications regarding probably how the roads align, and, you know, it may be that there would have to be changes to the actual intersection at Eliza Jordan Airport in order to get the proper alignment set up.
Yeah, that's right.
But what I have before you, just for your information, this is further down on the agenda. This is application number eight, which is their Phase 2. So, it shows that they're proposing a lot of lots that would back up to the existing Hunter's Ridge West subdivision. The, this one is also recommended for holdover by staff, because we do not have an overall plan for the total number of phases that are proposed for this overall development. And so, we would like it to have an overall composite plan first before any decision is made.
Yeah, all of that, which, we're fine with all of that in terms, those just sort of got submitted simultaneously, one by the other. We got no problem with submitting master plans and all that kind of stuff for those phases. The, the goal for us, obviously, today is the whole major street plan. One thing, though, that was mentioned about additional roads, and, and when Mr. Donnie comes up to talk, he can expand on this even more, and even maybe Mr. Barcliffe, but Johnson Road West is obviously, is the terminus for where this extension of Eliza Jordan Road comes in. There is, if I understand correctly, there's a county pay-as-you-go project going on right now, that the, the same owners have dedicated a substantial amount of right-of-way for the improvement of Johnson Road West, which just is west of where this Eliza Jordan extension is. So, I'm not sure of the reasoning, you know, if that, if there's a way to offset that extension of Eliza Jordan to Johnson Road West where there's improvement going on now. They both terminate, I think, Mr. Donnie said there's about a mile separation from where they intersect Airport Boulevard. So, there's a reason, obviously, for, for working on that road and acquiring right-of-way through there and so forth. And I mean, that's the connection point, you know, that they're going to extend that Eliza Jordan Road, too. So, you know, I, I mean, that may be something Mr. Barcliffe can expand on in terms of why they're moving in that direction there, and then we also need Eliza Jordan 100-foot right-of-way as well.
Yeah.
Doug, do we dispose ourselves legally at all, not requiring Hunter's Ridge to maintain their dedication, and then put in the balance of that on the landowner next door?
If it's okay with y'all, I'd like to reserve my comments until we go into deliberations and hear all the speakers.
Can I, I have a question, too.
Speak to. Is there gonna be a dedication required on Repo? I guess that's how you pronounce that, on the other side, or setback?
If there is an existing 50 or 60-foot right-of-way there, probably there would not be any dedication requirement. If it's an open ditch cross-section, then that would require a 60-foot wide right-of-way. And so, we would have to look at that as well.
Yeah, my question is whether or not we can borrow from that side slightly to offset, since that's not part of the major street plan. Something we're gonna talk about in deliberation, but just a thought, whether there's room to do that.
I have a question. Bert, you talked about what the process is in order to remove something from the major street plan. When Hunter's Ridge was developed, did the, they go through that portion and just, maybe this was given up?
Again, there was no discussion found in the minutes.
Okay, so they didn't go through the proper, were those regulations still in place in, at that time?
Everything is, you know, essentially in place as was in place back then. So, there really hasn't been any changes.
Any other questions, my commissioners?
Okay. And again, I just wanna clarify today, we're looking for an answer on that. So, I don't know how that goes down once you get into deliberation in terms of a vote as to, you know, hold over how we go about doing that. But I don't wanna get denied, I guess, today for the benefit of this kind of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Donnie Brown, Vice President of Alabama Pecan, and my wife, excuse me, is one of the owners. Her family's owned this land for 100 years, roughly, and I've been involved 41 years. And I've never heard of this plan. And, like I say, we didn't know about it, and it just, along, just, we didn't know what to say when we heard the plan. I've talked to the county, and this would kill a big deal. It's not gonna be, be built for 25 or 30 years, according to county engineer. We, as Alabama Pecan, just gave 15-plus or minus acres to the ca, excuse me, to the county for Johnson Road West extension. And it lines up with Lumpkin Road, which lines up with Novantown Road, which would take you straight, do the same thing Eliza Jordan does. And like I say, we just signed the right-of-way deeds back in December. And this, this, this house, housing the best, gonna have 215 homes at about a $220,000 average price. That's about $50 million worth of homes going on the tax rolls. And I just plead with you to do away with this right-of-way, because these people in Hunter's Ridge, if you measure 50 feet, some of them's house, it's gonna be right up against their house. And the reason I didn't know of this, I saw Hunter's Ridge being built and right on the line. So, why should we be asked to give our land when we've already gave, but a road that probably will never be built? Maybe in our lifetime.
I think the, the tough part is that, you know, that we don't know what's going to be the, the landscape of development 25, 30 years down the road. And, and, and that's the, the challenge in long-term planning, to make sure that, you know, we can allow for options in future generations.
But when you build a parallel road less than, right at a mile west, that's gonna go the same place? You gonna disturb all these houses when you already got right-of-way on the other place? I mean, why should we be punished? This is gonna kill a big deal. And we're not pro, we, we work with the county anyway. We give right-of-way. Like I say, just signed one for the power company the other day. And, I don't know. And if we're gonna do 50 feet, should we bear all the cost of the 50 feet? Why not 25 over here and 25 over there? Why, why should Alabama Pecan take the brunt of the whole thing? And when it went through in 2001, didn't he mention? Also, one other thing. I've read the Operation 2040 Plan, about 300 pages, that, that's south of my plan the commission put out.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's no mention of Eliza Jordan Extension on that plan.
I believe that's a...
It's federal funds. To have federal funds, I believe, you have to be on that list.
And that's, I believe, a 25-year plan?
It's 2040.
Yeah.
That'd be 20, 23, 22 years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for this?
Come down as neutral.
First of all, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns as a community. Hunter's Ridge Drive, could the people from Hunter's Ridge please stand? I know I'm not supposed to address them, but just, if you're here from Hunter's Ridge community, please stand. My name is Heidi Darst. I live at 1709 Hunter's Ridge Drive West. We learned of the possible development for Eliza Jordan South Extension two days ago. And in two days, with full-time jobs, six children, and I don't know how many children they have, we were able to comprise over 70-something names of people against Eliza Jordan's extension that were severely concerned about it. Even if the Pecan developers have to give 100 feet easement, and it's not affecting the, the north side of Hunter's Ridge, Eliza Jordan would bisect, and it's, I gave you guys a letter, it would bisect Hunter's Ridge Drive, which connects Repo Road to Hunter's Ridge Drive West. There would be at least four houses that would be, have to be bought and completely destroyed and removed. My property, you guys would have to remove my septic tank, my leach field, have fun with that, because it's a concrete foundation, you'd have to, it would be a mess. And so, the older part of Hunter's Ridge, all of our septic tanks are in the back. And that 50-foot easement, that's where our septic tanks are. That's one concern. Another concern is you would be exposing our quiet neighborhood, which currently is a half a mile from Repo, half a mile from Airport, to get to the one intersection that's in the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood. You'd be exposing us to major traffic. There are hundreds of children that live in our neighborhood that ride their bikes, play basketball, go for walks. Is that fair to them? I don't think so. Also, if the goal is to avoid congestion and traffic and whatnot, what other considerations can be made? What about putting traffic lights at either end of Eliza Jordan where they exist currently? That's one consideration. What about denying any commercial development that they own on Airport and Repo, because that would prevent further congestion? I don't know if you can. I don't know these, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a politician. Just wondering. And what about, we have written down about the Johnson Road, those are already being developed. So, could we not just redirect traffic there? Regarding Repo Road, I don't know if there's room, because there's ditches on either side, and there's a lot of development. So, we just ask you to please give consideration to that. Also, 50 feet in these homes that have been around for 20 to 30 years, this is what it would take you to, someone's garage, someone's back of their house, carports, guesthouses, pools. There's a lot to consider. So, how are you gonna compensate the private citizens? Do we bear the burden because of Adams Homes' failure to give easement, and because of other developers' failure to give easement? Do we bear that burden, losing the value of our homes, losing our peace? We just ask you to please, we're, as I wrote, we're asking for consideration for a dissection for major street planning to, for it to be removed for Eliza Jordan Southward Extension from Airport to Jeff Hamilton. Thank you. Do you have any questions? I'm not like an official, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here concerning this that would like to speak? I would like to note that if this holdover is granted, that the opportunity to speak will be given at that meeting as well, if you would like to speak then rather than now.
Hi, I'm Angela Smith. I'm a homeowner in the original Hunter's Ridge. We purchased our lot in 1991. I designed and built my dream home. We're the very last house in Phase 4 of Hunter's Ridge, which was on Lot 27. Our address is 10550 Hunter's Ridge Drive. And whether you take 25, 50, or 100 feet, it's going to destroy my home. And I apologize, I'm gonna be a little more personal, and I may cry. So, I'm sorry already. But when we built this house, we had three kids. We raised our three kids there. And bought more home than we should've. But we knew that when they moved away, we would make a lot of money on a nice house if we kept it up. The last year, we've put thousands of dollars into renovations, trying to update it and get it ready to make our money for our retirement. So, if this becomes a proposed project, we'll start back, January, I had a medical issue with, which made us hurry up to sell, because we need to get in a single-level house, because all of our bedrooms and, only a half-bath downstairs, all our bedrooms and full baths are upstairs. So, we need to sell much sooner. Can you pick the one up that had the purple and pink? So, if this becomes a proposed project, I don't know how we would be able to sell our house, and we'd be caught in limbo, sitting there trying to sell something we can't sell, because there's, there's possibly gonna be a street, a, a, a street coming through our house. We'll get to the next one, I'm sorry. When he was talking about which houses, you know, had the notice ahead of time, we definitely weren't one of the ones. And...
Can you, are you familiar with the Hunter's Ridge line that's going?
That line, that house right there were his, well, up a little and to the left, right under the army. That's my house. And we had no idea when we bought the lot and built our home, that there would be a street coming through there. There's, we built the home in 93, and apparently in 94, they decided they were gonna put a road through there. I never heard anything about it. I'm very concerned of us just being in limbo. And it would take, the 100 feet, if it came completely off of Alabama Pecan's project, it butts right up to the back, our backyard, and our, our lot is 107 feet wide, so it would come straight across us. So, I'm, I'm asking that the extension of Eliza Jordan be taken off the plan, that this easement not be allowed, and that eventually, we're gonna try to get it off the plan if we can. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, my commissioners?
Good morning. I'm Kenneth E. Newman. I reside at 1467 Hunter's Ridge Drive West. When I bought the property, I was planning towards my retirement. I retired from the city last Thursday with 33 years on the fire department. I've been planning to make sure that my wife, my grandkids were taken care of. During this week, I learned that this possible road extension is gonna take possibly 50 feet or 25 feet of my backyard. My house, my property has a big oak tree in the front yard, so my house was built towards the back. 50 feet, I will walk out my back door and have five feet to the fence. But there's no room for my grandson, five-year-old, even if it's 50 years, I may have other grandkids, or they may have grandkids, there'll be no backyard. Donnie with Alabama Pecan, he retired from the City of Mobile Fire Department also. I don't see that he should eat, end up eating the burden for this road. They say it may be 50 years, it may come, it may not. The uncertainty is un, you know, how do you sell people property to build a house on, and then, you know, don't say nothing or whatever, and then 50 years later, they take half their property to build a road? I heard something earlier on the comment of, well, we never know whether they're gonna do it or not. It's the planning commission's job to know where these roads are gonna go, and where they need to be built, and secure the property for these roads. Now, on this road, you said maybe take 50 feet. Okay, that would be a two-lane highway. That's what it is now, what Eliza Jordan is now. Repo is a two-lane. It has curves and all that. At, right there at Airport Boulevard, it takes a right turn towards Airport, kind of veers that way. Alabama Pecan owns that property there. They own the property all across the street on the north side of Airport Boulevard. So, they could re, work out a deal with him and purchase his property, and combine, take Repo and turn it a little bit, and take Eliza Jordan and turn it a bit. You've got that two-lane, two-way road all the way from Tanner Williams to Cottage Hill Road. Repo butts up to Cottage Hill Road. They both end together at a four-way stop there. And that would give them a passway all the way through. You know, the, it was slated to go all the way through, but being it ends, Eliza Jordan turns into Rigby, which turns into the Mobile Waterboard Pavilion there on Big Creek Lake, they're not gonna go past Big Creek Lake, because we've already had that problem with the 98 expansion, mud getting into our drinking water. So, they basically stopped anything going in that area. So, they're not gonna extend it. So, it's gonna be, okay, we've got a, a big four-lane highway from Tanner Williams to Jeff Hamilton. Okay, that might relieve a thing, but that's gonna destroy 90% of the properties that we're talking about, because when you take in 50 feet, 25 feet, you're destroying the value of the property, you're taking some of their pools, you're taking my little shop in the back, several other shops in the back, you're gonna destroy our property. You know, nobody's gonna want my property to walk out the back door, and 10 feet out the back door have a fence with a ditch and a road on the other side of it. It's, it's useless. Now, my planning of retirement and setting up for my family, now I don't have one. I don't know what to do. It's in your hands to decide what to do. But I do ask that if y'all are gonna plan major highways, make sure, when you plan them, that you secure the right-of-ways, and don't let them build subdivisions in there and end up taking away from your citizens. Because they're the ones that depend on y'all to make the right choices. And this choice here was not a right choice. Somebody dropped the ball. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this? How many is that been?
We had two people speak for the application, and then, well, we had Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Brown speak on behalf of the subdivision, and then we had Ms. Darst, Mr. Newman, Ms. Smith speak in concern, and then Mr. Barcliffe is a neutral party relating to this. So, one more.
We can take one more.
Good evening. My name is Terry Chapman. I live at 1447 Hunter's Ridge Drive West. I've been there 14 years. I'm 100% disabled veteran. I came to Mobile because it's a good place for veterans. And in my neighborhood, we have a lot of veterans. And so, I spent a lot of time having my home built, my wife and I. And we came home, day before yesterday, we had a letter in the mailbox saying that they're gonna take 50 feet of our property. I don't know the law or anything about what, what, you know, you can do about taking people property. But we worked hard. I have a pool in the back, remeasured, I'm gonna lose my pool, I'm gonna lose my shed. I do have children that are in school. And the neighborhood is basically military, retired military, and Coast Guard active-duty military. And so, we are a closely knit community, and we try to look out for each other in that community. But I, it's, I don't think it's fair that we, you know, we worked hard. And also, in the neighborhood, we, we paid the price in the country. I'm a two-year Vietnam veteran, 21 years of service, and I love my country, and I learned to love Alabama, because I'm from Louisiana. And I just hope, when they're considering developing property to be, have home built on, that they, whoever, the planning commissioner, that they look at, okay, let's keep our citizen informed. Because now, we're, we're in a limbo, and I really don't know what to do. And I told my wife, I'm getting ready to turn 68, I said, I guess I had to get another job, and move, and, and start all over again, which I would do. But I don't think it's fair to any of us, and that we ask that you please consider making a modification or some type of deter to spare us, anyway, and anyone else in the future. I mean, it's only fair. And I know that you're gonna do the best to help build this, build this county up, and I appreciate that. But remember, you're a citizen, because we work hard, just like you do. And we go home to, we, we come to our home, and we just enjoy, you know, what we have, because it's something that we, what we work for. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We'll take all these things that we've heard under consideration, and we go to deliberation session. I think we've heard all the speakers that we can hear on that issue, and we'll move on to item number two. South side of Airport Boulevard, 780 West, Redlands Subdivision, Phase 1. Mr. Cameron recuses. Again, it's recommended for holdover. It'll probably be granted, at which time, both parties, again, for and against, will get an opportunity to speak at the next meeting that it will be held over to. However, you do have the right to speak now. Is the owner present? Good, all right. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against this? Thank you. Item number three, 6050 and 6086 Whitewood Longleaf Gate Subdivision, Phase 2. Sixty-fifty and sixty-eighty-six, Whitbrook Longleaf Gate subdivision, phase two. Subdivision, PUD and zoning, all parts are recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? New subdivision applications. Item number four, forty-seventy-eight Dolls Road. It's recommended for a holdover until the April nineteenth meeting. Is the applicant present? That will probably be granted, again.
The applicant actually sent in the request to hold it over since they could not be present at today's meeting.
All right. It will probably be granted. Again, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that meeting for or against, if you so choose, but you have the right to speak now, if there's anyone here to speak for or against this. Item number five. Crane Works subdivision, fifty-one fifty-one, seventy-five and fifteen Willis Road. Application's recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number six. First Baptist Church of Theodore subdivision, Rita subdivision, seventy-one twenty-five and seventy-thirty-one, Oak Military Roads, recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present?
The applicant notified me that he would not be able to attend today's meeting, but he was in agreement with all the conditions for approval.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Item number seven. West side of Dolls Lane extension.
Valace needs to recuse on seven.
Note that Valace has recused. This item is recommended for holdover to the May third, and actually, it has to be because some notifications were not sent out. Again, so it will be granted. Again, you have the opportunity to speak for or against this, but you will have the opportunity to speak at that meeting as well. Is there anyone here to speak on this particular project?
Mr. Chairman, let me just point out that we did receive notice from an abutting or an adjacent property owner on this side, that they did not receive notice, and we checked the list that was submitted, and they were not on the list. And while we were also reviewing the list, we found that there was a parcel on the west side that also did not receive notice. So they'll have to provide us with additional labels and postage so that we can notify properly.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
My name is Irene Pilgrim. I live at eighty-nine forty-three Dolls Creek Drive, which is north of this property. I'm not against the neighborhood. My main concern is that the flooding that my land has, I gave some pictures, to where there's a particular section in that, on that property that floods, and it flows across my backyard. I'm not able to have a built-in swimming pool or anything like that, because at times it gets about two feet deep on one side of my property. And my neighbor who lives to the east of me, her house has flooded twice on her, and then the previous owners. It's been like five times total since that house was built. And I just want to make sure that it's developed where it, it doesn't cause more flooding or possibly relieves us from the flooding. Because that, that should have never been approved for it to go the way it goes on our property, and for me and my neighbor to bear the brunt of all this water coming from this property here. That's in question. And that's just my main concern. Those pictures there of my backyard, of when it rains, and that's not in this, when I took the pictures, that's not the worst it's ever done either. It's actually gotten deeper than that at times. It's gotten in my husband's shed, and, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak concerning this project?
Herschel Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting. We're the representative here for this one as well. We have been out, our engineers have been out and have been in observance of some of those drainage issues, and obviously, we'll take all that into consideration. So just for the sake of her clarification of things that's been noted, and we've seen that, and plan on helping with that.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other discussion concerning this one? Thank you. Item number eight. Redland subdivision, phase two. Mr. Cameron's recused. Adjacent to the east side, again, it's recommended for holdover to the May third meeting. However, you do have the opportunity to speak on this now, if you so choose. Thank you. New planned unit development applications. Item number nine, twenty-nine fifty-nine and twenty-nine eighty-nine Dolphin Street. Ms. Latham is recused. Robert Myers, staff recommends, tentatively recommends it for denial. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. William Latta, Clark G. Latham and Associates, three nine zero one Spring Hill Avenue. The application before you is for a development at the intersection of Dolphin Street and Sage. As noted in the staff remarks in the staff report, a number of plans have been submitted throughout the years for this site. The most recent being in 2016, which is my client. Unfortunately, due to some medical issues, he was not able to carry out the PUD, which was approved, and therefore, it expired. In submitting this application, the thought was that it would easily be approved since it had previously been approved. But we've come to realize that the future land use map and plan apparently have some adverse effects on our parcel, on our parcel. And so we are requesting that you holdover and not deny this application, to give us some time to meet with staff, to discuss these implications. We spoke with staff yesterday, and they seemed amenable to that.
So you're asking for a holdover instead of denial?
What would be an appropriate timeframe for holdover for staff?
Well, typically, we would like a two-meeting holdover, which would place this on the May third agenda, but I don't know if that would be okay with the applicant.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number ten.
My name is Mary Zogby. I live at twenty-eight sixty-two Hillburn Drive, and I've lived there for sixty-two years. Hillburn backs up to the Graff property. While I'm not immediately affected, I saw your recommendations here, and frankly, I concur with them. It's time to have a master plan for that area. It's about thirty-two acres, I think, and it's in an area that, frankly speaking, I mean, things have been proposed in the past. Those of us who've lived out there know that one day, this property will be developed. It was the old Graff Dairy property. So we know it's primed for development. But I would hope that the owners of the property, and of course, I know one of them who lives next door to me, would get together and develop a master plan for it. I'm not against them developing their own property, but we'd like, we'd just like to know what's going on. I got the letter, and I was very glad to get the letter. Couldn't get any real information, but I heard somebody wanted to put a car wash there. So if that's what the planning commission decides is the best and highest use of the land, that's, you know, their business and the develop, and the owner's business. But it's too nice a piece of property just to be, I knew that at one time, there was a bank that was going to go there, but they ended up buying, well, it was Hancock, because Whitney ended up selling to them. So just take some consideration as to those of us who've lived there and kept our properties up, and, you know, let's come up with something that's good and reasonable and will benefit the area. Thank you.
I'm Rose McPhillips, and I actually live adjacent to the major plot, not that particular piece, because that's in the middle of the entire piece. I don't know if you've got the entire piece that they, they show you. And I live, I live actually adjacent to the east line of the property that is trying to be developed. I know that in the past, that this approval for this car wash had gone through. However, in 2017, of course, the city got wise and did the future land use plan and recommended this for low-density residential, which means there are only six houses, no more than six houses per acre. And, you know, and I think that that's appropriate, or retail that would go in with that particular type of development. I'm not sure a car wash does that, you know? And I concur with Mary that I think the master plan needs to be developed that would develop this. This is a, probably the largest piece of undeveloped property in the city. And so something, and, and, and I've got to tell you, I'm related to these people. So, which makes it even worse. But I do think that it needs to be developed where it is, you know, citizen-friendly. It's across the street from a park. You know, it needs to be something like Spring Hill has done, and even, even some of the other developments that have been done more recently, where it is more walkability, bikeability, citizenability. And I think that that, and I don't think a car wash necessarily fits in that, especially when all you're looking at is a bunch of stalls with vacuum cleaners in them. So that's all I have to say. But I'm ready to wait, wait over until May for the, see what, what's happening.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak against this? The owner may come reply.
Just to be clear, my client's parcel is just lot two that was shown up there, and we are not in control of lot one or lot three. That being said, one of the comments was regarding having an overall plan for the entire development. One of the reasons we're requesting the holdovers is so that we may approach the owners and get this plan together, show kind of what they're thinking as well. The main reason for this PUD is to consolidate access. Right now, this lot is correctly zoned for this use, and could have a driveway out onto Dolphin. It would be better to consolidate these access points, instead of having multiple driveways running onto Dolphin Street, use one driveway for the whole development, same as on Sage. So that's the main reason for this PUD, is to improve access, which by decreasing the number of driveways, does improve the pedestrian-friendly aspect of the site.
Thank you, sir. Questions by commissioners? All right, thank you. Item number ten. Eight forty Domain Road. It's recommended, tentatively recommended for approval. Is the applicant present?
Tri Stabler, eleven Northwater Street, suite two-four-two-nine-oh, Mobile, three-six-six-oh-two. We have no objection to the conditions for approval, but I did want to make one comment, and I'm not sure if it's significant or not. But there was a note in the staff report that the PUD approval would expire in one year if no permits for development were obtained. And we, there are no proposed, no developments proposed for this site. This was just an application to amend an existing PUD, to remove some property that's going to be subdivided out, subject to this approval. And in essence, the, the PUD would be amended to conform to the existing site as it's currently developed. And so I didn't want there to be any issue with an expiration of a PUD, when in fact, there is, there are no permits for development that are going to be obtained in the immediate future, anyway.
Well, we briefly spoke before the meeting, and what I suggested is that in addition to mentioning it during the meeting here, that when the revised PUD site plan is submitted for our files, that he also include a memo letting us know that there will be no changes to the site that would require a permit, and thus, there would no, not be a need for it to expire based on the issuance or non-issuance of a permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions by commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? New sidewalk waiver applications. Item number eleven, two-fifty Yeen Street, MTC Logistics of Alabama. This application for waiver sidewalks is recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendation? Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New group applications. Item number twelve. Subdivision, PUD and zoning, tentatively recommended for approval. This ten-eleven and ten-thirty-seven Hill Crest Road and sixty-three fifty-three Chandler Street. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Happy Campers RV Park subdivision, north side of Coca-Cola Road. Tentatively recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendation? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen Willard. My family owns the partial property next to this. Understand that there was an application for this RV park or something similar a couple of years ago, and it was turned down. Is, does anybody have any information about that?
I don't remember that we have received an RV application for this property in particular, at least since it's been within the city limits.
Okay.
When it was in the county, there is no zoning.
Okay.
And so that it would have been allowed unless there was some other reason why it could not have been allowed.
Okay. And there's just one road to Coca-Cola. Is the main entrance going to be not Coca-Cola Road, the other road?
No, they have designed it to come in from Coca-Cola Road only, because the road on the north side, Wiley Road, is not really improved to city standard at this time.
Okay.
But we have asked that right-of-way be dedicated along that portion of the property so that there will be additional room to bring that road up to standard at some point. And then, if it is improved to city standard, then they can get access to that.
Okay, you mean Coca-Cola Road, they improve?
Well, no, they would, in the future, if this road, Wiley, is ever improved.
Yeah.
So it's city standard, then they would be able to access that way as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have just a general question out there, but just in terms of the planning. It's just something I've wondered about a lot. Are there any ordinances that we, oh, I'm sorry, Heidi Darst, seventeen zero nine- Oh, I'm sorry, Heidi Darst, 1709 Hunter's Ridge Drive West, Mobile. This is just a general questioning and development. Are there any ordinances that require developers to preserve a certain percentage of mature trees? Because when I see these places just being cleared out, they just totally rape the land of, you know, our air filter. So, I'm just requesting that there be some kind of acknowledgement to that, if there's not already in consideration. And I don't know if I need to go to city council with that or what, but, and I see you smiling and laughing, but it's something that's crossed my mind. My kids even say it, like, why aren't they saving trees? So, anyway, thank you. Is there, though?
I'll just state that there are tree and landscaping requirements within the zoning ordinance, and currently 24-inch and larger live oak trees are really the only trees that meet preservation criteria.
Okay, because on Schillinger Road and Hit Road, you guys, not you guys, but the developers just cleared major acreage and did not save one tree, and there were many trees, having spent many years there in practices. So what kind of fines are being?
Well, in that case, they did obtain permits to remove those trees.
So, when are those ordinances gonna be enforced and when are they not?
A preservation status can be applied to a tree. However, if a development is proposed that requires the removal of the tree, typically there's very little that can be done to prevent that. And they do have to go through a permitting process to obtain that, and that is reviewed by their arbiters for the city.
Okay, thank you.
If I could comment, too, because I, that's in the district that I represent, the Schillinger's and Hit Road.
So you're already representative over there?
Excuse me?
So you're all representative over in that area?
Yes, that's, that's in the city limits. It was Zone B3, which is heavy commercial, for lack of a better term. And our city does give permits out for land, what they call land clearing, even before the plans are available to be shown, if it's going to be a PUD. And that is a tremendous misstep that continues to go on, and I'm hoping through our future land use codes that, that that will be changed.
Question for staff. In the current zoning overhaul process that we're going through, are there any components to that that would address, you know, how much, how many trees can be cleared?
Are we still on the RV park?
No, no.
Have we moved off that to something?
Well, she asked a general question.
Yeah.
If it is of interest. I think people, people see this all the time, and this commission deals with development. So I think it's a very appropriate, but it's procedure, policy, and the way things were done, and it does need to change.
So how would I, under the circumstances?
When, when the future, when, when the codes come forward for public hearing will be, it will come to this commission and also to the city council if it's a zoning code.
And I'll just say briefly that the draft zoning ordinances will be published on the website mapformobile.org.
Thank you. If there's anyone else here to speak for or against the RV park, could we please, this is your opportunity to speak now? Thank you. Item number 14, 65 North Mobile Street, UMS Wright Corporation, it's recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Advocate is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you very much. That closes our public deliberation. We're now going to... We'll begin with item number one. Mr. Cameron recuses. It was recommended for holdover, but this one also had the question, asking for clarity concerning the right-of-way dedication. I believe Doug had some comments.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the meeting last Friday with the developer and his representatives and the county engineer and the planning staff. What the county engineer said at that point in time was that he would not be in a position, or the county would not be in a position to get funding for the construction of this new road for 20 to 25 years, and probably would not be built in our lifetime. What we do today will have no, will not take any land from Hunter's Ridge. If we do a 50 or 100 feet here, let's say we did 50 feet here, in, in 25 or 30 years from now, the county needed 50 more feet, then at that point in time, they would condemn the property, I guess, through Hunter's Ridge. That would obviously be a total taking. They just wouldn't take 50 feet of their backyard and just leave the house there. They would take the entire property, and those people would be relocated. The master plan, as it was shown to me at that meeting, did have 50 feet on the Hunter's Ridge side and 50 feet on the Alabama pecan side. The subdivision regulations state that, and I'll read this one sentence. Whenever a subdivision embraces a major street, as shown on the major street plan component of the comprehensive plan, such major street shall be platted in the general location of the width called for by the major street plan, and to the extent that the right-of-way for such major street is embraced within such subdivision shall be dedicated for public use. It was my opinion last Friday and still is today, we cannot, I don't think legally, take 100 feet from this subdivision or this application, because only 50 feet was shown in the original, or in the current major street plan. So, the decision is, do we, do y'all take 50 or don't take anything? Y'all have, this commission has in the past, approved subdivisions without taking right-of-way? I'm not saying it's good or bad or right or wrong, it's up to y'all.
And what you just read, though, did it say that?
It says shall.
Shall.
And it has been done, I mean, it's, it's been, I won't say ignored, but it has been approved before without dedications. What happened in '01 or whenever Hunter's Ridge was approved, I have no idea. But I guess I saw the, the notes I had written down from the discussion earlier. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Just to respond, I guess, one of the several challenges with this application is that, for instance, let's say we don't require the right-of-way. The county decides that they're gonna continue, 25, 30 years from now, they're gonna build Eliza Jordan and make it a major street to go through there. They'll now have to take 100 feet of property, potentially a whole new set of houses and development on the, on the opposite side of Hunter Ridge.
Yes, and part of the discussion in our meeting Friday was, when, when I told them that, I think the best or the most the planning commission could do is 50 feet. The county's position was, well, at least we'll have a two-lane, enough width for a two-lane road through there. So they might just decide to stay with, with the 50 instead of 100. 25, 30 years, 50 years from now, who knows?
Just, just another question for staff. Have all resources been exhausted from trying to find any, any previous minutes? I mean, have all archives been researched to the maximum extent practical?
Well, I, I personally did pull the minutes for the meeting regarding Hunter's Ridge West and their scan, and they're probably, the whole discussion regarding this application is about two paragraphs. And there was no discussion of a proposed major street.
Okay, thank you.
Now, in this particular meeting today, since it's asking for a holdover, can we even, can we make a decision either way now, or is that something that would be handled when the applicant? Are we just making a tentative decision so that they know what to put on there?
You make a final decision today. If you vote to approve it, subject to 50 feet dedication or subject to no dedication, that's within your discretion today. A holdover, I, I think the holdover was really suggested when it was up, the last meeting for, till the April 19th. Somehow it got on this agenda. A holdover is not gonna resolve this issue. I think this is the only issue left to really discuss.
Remind me?
Oh, yeah, if, it would allow, if y'all, okay, I'll take that back. If, if y'all, after discussion, say we wanna hold it over to require them to resubmit a plan showing 50 feet, 50 feet dedication, that, would that be on this one or the Phase 2, or both of them?
Well, it would start with this one, and then it would fall down to the Redlands, the entire subdivision of Redlands being revised to show that dedication as well.
I mean, I think what's difficult here is maybe what's best for the county today or for the city today is probably what's not best 50 years from now, because the housing market in Mobile is fairly stagnant when you compare it to Baldwin County. They're selling about three or four times more home, new homes, than we are on this side. So, I mean, we really need new growth in Mobile. We need new subdivisions. We need 215 new homes.
But, but when you add all of those new homes, when you, when you, when you, when you play that out decades from now, you know, even though there's, there's improvement and widening going on now, it, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that, that we can, you know, have, you know, accommodate the traffic associated with that, you know, large growth that is possible in, in, you know, those undisturbed, undeveloped areas of land. It, it's almost because that's the, the area that, that it seems to be really growing and that has the, the space to do so, it makes it all that more important to at least preserve the option of additional north-south corridors well into the future and, you know, make a decision then, but not, you know, not eliminate that as an option now.
We're not eliminating it, because they still have the right to come in and condemn it and acquire the right-of-way.
But it would be infinitely more difficult to have that as an option, like exponentially more expensive to do so.
It might ultimately negatively impact far more people.
Exactly.
But there's also concern for the impact within, from now to 25 years, of what we hang on Hunter's Ridge. We're not asking for land now, but now that this street is out there, I certainly agree that people trying to sell their houses there and the people that are right in the end of that road have a concern, and we're just hanging that on them for the time being, not knowing how we're gonna develop that landscape. And it does sound like there may be other options for that road and...
But that's been dedicated as a proposed major street for some time now. I'm sorry, it's been on the major street plan as a proposed future major road for, since?
24 years.
For 24 years.
So by not requiring any dedication, you're essentially rendering the major street plan...
And it's going against state...
You're not removing it from the major street plan, but like Thomas said, you're, you're forcing a condemnation in the future.
Instead of planning.
If the county does, or the city, if in 30, 50 years from now, this is in the city, decides to build that road.
But that's what planning is about, is planning for organized growth of the city in a manner which suits the most people. Right? I mean...
That's part of planning, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask?
I didn't think I really needed an answer, but I'll give you one.
No, I know, it was rhetorical, I'm sorry about that.
I think this poses just, I mean, the, the perfect storm, the perfect conundrum for everyone. I mean, I think the commission likely all wants exactly what the neighbors want, is nice neighborhoods that are, that are well-thought-out, well-planned, that are, that are private, where they're private. But those same residents also want good traffic flow when those areas do develop. When you have to kind of imagine Hill Crest Road 30 years ago, it was a two-lane road. Lots of Airport Boulevard was like that. I have a picture in my office, Airport Boulevard at I-65, it was a two-lane road, I think in the 60s. So, 25 years will go by like, like that, and I think it's very unfortunate that, that we've got this situation before us. If Hunter's Ridge was before us today and it was vacant land, it was vacant land on either side, I think it would be clear that we'd be asking for the 50 feet from one side and 50 feet for, for the other. Very impossible. From a property... Quick, quick number, there's like 25 houses along that, along that run, and if the county or if the city at some point ever tried to acquire those, especially 20, 30 years from now, that's, cost of right-of-way would be astronomical. But that would be the cost of having to have a road there, should, should everything else that was allowed to be developed come forward. It's just, it's, it's an unfortunate cost for the homeowners and a very, greater unfortunate cost for the greater taxpayers that have to pay for it all. So, we've got a tough, tough decision ahead of us that there is no perfect answer.
I have a question. The owner of the property mentioned that they had already dedicated to the county for...
A completely different road.
Yes, but it, but it could offshoot from, it doesn't go, it doesn't go below this development, I guess that would be south, but...
All right, show that, while she's talking.
But the county today came before us and recommended that we not remove the road from a, you know, from a standpoint that it stay on the, on the drawing board, so to speak. It's, it's not anything that's funded, obviously, but eventually it will have a funding mechanism, 'cause it won't happen otherwise, because it's a public road. No developer's gonna come in and do it. So, all we can get is the dedication, and we don't even know the future land is, we're talking subdivision, but it could be commercial, because there's no zoning out there. So you don't know exactly what the stress will be and the use. If it was zoning, you would have a more comfort level, but we don't have that out in the county. And we have a long-range planner, and maybe if there are some words we could hear from you, I would really be interested in hearing.
Thank you. I believe that the major street plan is adopted as a planning tool for the planning horizon, and if that plan is disregarded, then that's a fundamental failure. That's my thought.
And, yeah, just to add to Brian, I think, you know, I'm trying to keep these two items separate. I don't know that we have enough information as a commission to either relitigate the major street plan at this point or, or de facto disregard it. So I think we need to be careful. If, if that's something that needs to be explored, it needs to be explored at a larger scale with a lot more information, so...
But, Bert, remind me, if we were to not require the dedication, that would start a process that, where that would happen, correct?
Well, the planning commission could direct staff to evaluate this segment of the extension of Eliza Jordan Road. It's about two and a half miles from Airport Boulevard down to Jeff Hamilton. And you could request that staff look at it and work with county engineering to find out if there are alternative alignments that would work. Perhaps, as mentioned, Johnson Road West starts at Jeff Hamilton and then curves to the west this way.
Well, Bert, whose decision was it to remove the red area that you showed that was removed from the major street plan? Whose decision was that? Because you've removed it from the south and it's removed to the north, so...
Well, the decision was suggested by staff when the planning commission was considering the future land use map and the major street plan back in 2017.
And then we approved it as a commission, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I think we should take a look at it, because I don't wanna require 25 feet, which sounds like our only, 50 feet are our only option, then later find out we actually need a little more, and it's just not feasible cost-wise, and there's a better solution that we go with that's cheaper further west, and we've hung them to hold this land to nothing for, I think it's worth taking a hard look at.
So, but the, the most we can do, if I'm understanding correctly, would be 50 feet at this point. And Doug, help me out here. If we do not dedicate 50 feet, which is, is, is what our major street plan guides us to do, would we technically be violating state code?
I don't like the word violate when I'm talking to a client, but it, the code, the subdivision regulations state, and to the extent that the right-of-way for such a major street is embraced within such subdivision shall be dedicated for public use. Have we 100% complied with that in the past? No.
But there is a mechanism if we want to take something off of the major streets and it requires a public hearing.
Yeah, Bert just described that.
And a staff study.
Correct.
To give us ideas of what other movements could be potentially in work and we'd have to work with the county because it's basically, even though it's not part of the city limit, so that's the administration and the representation.
Do we burden, do we burden the developer with the holdup while they go through the process of trying to remove it from the major street plan or does the developer, would the developer care to wait through that process, you know, if they...
That would, you know, take several months for our staff to get with county engineering and then do the public hearing, notices, public hearings, votes. It'd take, I'd say at least three months, ninety days, minimum, ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
But isn't that the only path forward if we didn't require the dedication?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that the only path forward if we didn't require the dedication?
No, we, it would still remain on the major street plan. You just wouldn't have the dedication. But if that's what you wanted to do, then you could not require the dedication today and then request the staff look into relocating it elsewhere with the county engineer's office.
But nothing we do today, nothing we do today removes it from the major street plan.
Correct.
Correct.
And then, and then, and as such, even if we said study an alternative, that's just an alternative, but it doesn't really go anywhere because it's still not amending the major street plan, it's just giving us something else to think about.
Well, I guess if you do what Taylor's suggesting, it kind of forces the issue to relocate, to find if there is at this point in time a, a better or another route to take between those two major roads.
Can you put up the slide that has the, the site?
Well, let me just also add, though, that as part of the rezoning effort that's currently underway, looking at the zoning ordinance, we are also reevaluating some of the recommendations of the future land use map, so that will be brought before the commission for consideration as well. And then as part of that, we could also include amendments to the major street plan, which could include looking at this section and looking at alternatives. But this is the map you requested.
Mr. Hobson, could we require the dedication at this point, but also ask that a different route be looked into and then at some point in time have then asked for that dedication to be vacated if another solution is found? Then, then you're sort of...
It wouldn't do any good because they, they need, if they're going to go, if we're going to approve something today...
They need to start working.
They're going to start working, building the houses, so vacating that wouldn't really do them any good a year from now or six months from now.
Well, kind of like a Florida street extension that was a major street plan that since has been abandoned and we still have a long strip of right-of-way.
Right. A question for staff, can you go back to the map that shows all the, all the other subdivisions up and down? How, how long would it take y'all to compile, you know, the, the actual specifics of if additional right-of-ways were developed, I mean, were required on the screen?
Well, I think in total with the Greenwinds, there were like twenty-five subdivisions, so probably about half of that number. We could definitely have it for a next meeting.
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
That would be good information to have, very good.
Well, I think that would tell us if all along that has been the intent for that road really to be a major street plan because then it would have shown long-term effort to put together the pieces of land, you know, for that, that extension. Chairman, can I make a motion?
Well, can I, can I just look at the site that we normally have besides these embellishments where you see exactly what is being asked of us today for the subdivision?
Now, also on tonight, or today's agenda is...
Yes.
A phase here and then a phase down here.
In lots two, one, and four, without zoning, lot one could come back, lot two could come back, because it's not included, correct?
They're not included in the Redlands.
In that big seventy lot thing.
They're not included in the Redlands residential subdivision.
That know our homes, we're going to assume those are our homes.
Yes, ma'am.
Would there be an opportunity at another time to look at right-of-way along Repole? I mean, as Eliza Jordan rather, not Repole?
Only if it comes back before the planning commission for a subdivision.
A question for staff, remind me, when we went through the portion of updating the future land use map and in updating the major streets plan, there, there was a level of analysis at that point, looking at some of the growth trends and, and things like that to help make the decisions on which segments to remove and which to preserve?
There were discussions with Mobile County Engineering to get their feedback on which road segments in the planning jurisdiction, which is in the county, they wanted to retain and which could be removed, so...
When you, when you look at the map with this, I'm looking at application number four and where we're going to be putting, they're looking at the seventy lots and you look at Repole and then you see that other subdivision, basically, I don't see a negative effect on having, and Repole is an, I don't, I'm not as familiar out there, but I imagine it's a pretty decent corridor of getting traffic going out to Airport.
Yeah, Bert, put that map back up.
Basically, we would be asking for the same type of configuration hitting that other development, the Hunter's Ridge, correct? Like, in, in other words, there's a road that runs behind people's backyards.
Are you trying, are you saying we need to duplicate that on Eliza Jordan or you say we ought to look at Repole as a future major?
No, I'm just saying that when you look at, when you, when, this development with the seventy lots, okay, even though it's a one, it's one site right here, Repole Road is developed, correct? And so backyards are going to be backyards just like it is, no, people come off of Repole Road for this development. So, I, I, I see character not changing too terribly much, is what I'm saying. And the staff has asked for the hundred and that seems to be because we didn't get it the last time from the other side.
But I have a, I have a major issue requiring all dedication.
No, I hear what you're saying.
Just from a property owner's rights, I mean, I don't think...
Right. No, I under, I understand what you're saying.
But that's not really what we're...
Well, even if we said fifty, but we even say, okay, let's consider fifty in the county, and I know this side of the road's not going to like it, but if the county said, well, we'll just do a fifty-foot two-lane road, then these folks ought to give twenty-five and those folks ought to give twenty-five. It shouldn't be all, all one side.
But that's a decision that's, that is so far down the road, I, I mean, and, and I see what you're saying. You know, but I, I think we need to be consistent with the most recent plans.
Can we have a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we hold this over to April nineteenth and request that the staff provide us with a narrative of the previous dedications, north and south of Airport Boulevard, you know, of subdivisions that have been done in the past twenty years or plus or minus or so.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Well, yes. I, I understand the, the, the logic of, of doing that, but I, I guess my, my, my thought is, is if, you know, this has been the plan that, that we adopted, you know, I, I, is, is that, should that be the deciding factor?
I think in the absence of, of any more minutes that relate to Hunter's Ridge, actions that were taken on subdivisions north and south would hopefully lead us to some final conclusion of what the longer-term planning intent was. And so, I mean, I just, I can't make a decision until I know that, what that information is, how that right-of-way jogs in and out.
Okay.
And if there's substantial portions of it that are, you know, are already a hundred feet and if half of it was from the east side of the road and half of it was from the west side.
And then Nick, the expert on that, we vacated some a year ago, to two thousand and seventeen, we vacated some south and some north of this Eliza Jordan major street, so...
Yeah, I just want to see what the history of it looks like as, as a corridor.
Okay, I guess my, my only point is I think we should just be careful, you know, in looking at perhaps what the intent was and what the intent is. That's it.
Got to look at both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. It's held over till April nineteenth for staff to come back with a report on other actions that have been taken with the other subdivisions. Would item number two be joined with that or... Okay, so item one and two are joined together, would eight be joined as well? I think it's one, two, and eight.
Yeah.
Do, do we have to still vote on the...
I'd like to make a motion that items two and eight be joined as well.
Second.
Moved and seconded, that one, two, and eight all be held over with same, for the same reasoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, pass. Item number three, sixty-fifty and sixty-eighty-six, White Bark Drive, Longleaf Gate subdivision, tentative recommended for approval for subdivision, PUD and zoning, is there a motion?
So, move as staff recommended?
Second.
I just have a question of the staff. Was this the one where the, the access to come across, has that all been smoothed out?
The access, you mean on within White Bark?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, that was resolved.
Okay, so that's all good now because that was why it was held up and then held up because the applicant wasn't here last time. Thank you very much. This is a private drive, not...
Private road subdivision.
Is this not one of the applications where we need to adopt the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yes, because there is a planning unit development, there will be adoption and acceptance of the findings of fact, that would be item B.
I'd like to amend Ms. Regis' motion to include the staff's findings of fact. Second.
Properly moved and seconded and for the motion and the amendment to include finding of facts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, item passes. New subdivision applications. Item number four, forty, forty-seventy-eight Dolls Road, applicant has requested a holdover until April nineteenth, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Items held over till the nineteenth. Item number five, fifty-one, fifty-one, seventy-five Willis Road, Crane Works subdivision, recommended for tentative approval, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve based on staff recommendations, second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, item passes. Item number six, seventy-one, twenty-five, and seventy-thirty-one Old Military Road, First Baptist Church Theodore, recommended for approval.
I move we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, item passes. Item number seven, west side of Dolls Lane, Mr. Valles recuses. This item has to be held over until the May third meeting due to notice issues. I'll make the recommendation, I mean, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, that is held over to May third. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, pass. New planning unit development applications. Item number nine, twenty-nine fifty-five and twenty-nine eighty-nine Dolphin Street, Ms. Latham recuses. Applicant has requested a holdover till May third. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, item will be held over till May third. Item number ten, eight-forty, Rumain Road, recommended for tentative approval, is there a motion?
Need to make a motion to adopt the findings of fact to...
There were some, the applicant had some, some concerns that he raised and I think it hurt, had some solutions, were those referenced in the...
Uh, no, that was referenced in the staff report, just to remind applicants that typically a planning unit development will expire in one year if there's no action on the plan, but in this case, this is a developed site and the applicant has stated they're not proposing any new construction. The intent was to remove the portion closest to Concepcion Street Road from the previously approved PUD, so they're now bringing it back from a two-lot to a one-lot subdivision.
So, nothing needs to change in the, in the staff recommendations?
That's correct, we'll just note that with a memo that he will write and submit with the revision of the plan.
I'll, I'll make that motion to approve and adopt the findings of fact.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, item pass. New sidewalk waiver. Uh, item number eleven, two-fifty, Yen Street, recommended for approval of sidewalk waiver, is there a motion?
I move to approve based on staff recommendations, second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, item passes. New group applications. Item number twelve, ten-eleven and ten-thirty-seven Hillcrest Road and sixty-three fifty-three Chandler subdivision, PUD and zoning, all are recommended for approval, is there a motion?
I move to approve and adopt the staff's findings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I have some questions, mostly of traffic engineering, if that's okay, about Chandler. It's very narrow right-of-way and I see where you're asking for the dedication of twenty-five feet. Is that going to help open up that roadway because now that there'll be more parking up there on that footprint for the, all the employees with pilot?
Right now, there's no planned improvements for Chandler Road, so there would have to be some kind of project to widen or improve either the roadway or the radiuses.
It, it does help with the power pole issue on that corner, it does help to give some relief for that power pole to be moved such that the radius could be improved.
Okay, is this something that we could have with this development as we've done in other things out in the district? In other words, one that changed and they're, they're going to funnel much more traffic. We already know that it is so narrow that people, especially those that want to go south on Hillcrest that are at Chandler, and they're not over because they want to make that left turn when they're waiting there and someone comes in, there's, there's been a number of, that's been reported to me, I asked the city to study it, to see what could be done. Is this an opportunity with this?
I mean, typically, we look at the, the development to make some changes when there's actually, I mean, he's growing the parking lot, to my knowledge, the building footprint is not changing, so I, I don't have a measurement stick to say he's increasing it by this, I mean, I don't know where those cars are coming from that they need the additional parking if they're just parking elsewhere, but that is my understanding of the plan, it is just a parking lot expansion.
Right, but it's, okay, but it comes right in off of Chandler, so if people are now going to be parking in there, how many parking spaces are we talking about are being added? That's a big impact. Do you know the number? Okay, I guess I got the back of the table, too. I mean, it looks, just looking at the, I mean, there's already a lot of people coming in off of Chandler, now there's going to be more. I mean, certainly the, the, the property that's being configured to add additional parking at that entrance area would want to keep their employees from not being involved in...
Well, there are existing two-hundred-and-three parking spaces, it appears, and they're adding an additional one-hundred-and-four... an additional 104 spaces.
That's a lot.
They will be removing a few, but, so the net total will be 299 parking spaces. Now, this site does also, in addition to having access to Chandler, does funnel into, I believe, the Pilot catastrophe office complex, which then has access to Hillcrest Road as well.
Johnson doesn't seem to be the problem because it's a little wider. It's really that Chandler is such a narrow, there's no curb and gutter.
Well, and this development will not have direct access to Johnson Lane at all. It'll just go through Chandler, through the existing curb cut. Where they are building the new parking lot at the corner of Hillcrest and Chandler, they would be required to put in a sidewalk as well. But in terms of street improvements, I don't believe the first phase that was done required any street improvements either.
Right, and that might have been the time to get it, but we're compounding it. I mean, the city did study it, and so, does it have to become a CIP program, is what you're saying, for the district to put it on the list?
What, yeah, what's at issue there? There's a power pole right on that corner, and I believe it has a guy wire that comes down, that makes improving that radius difficult. This dedication will allow that power pole, probably some room to be moved back, and then it's not a big, big effort to improve that radius. I believe Traffic Engineering, who had been previously working with Alabama Power to try to get it, to try to get that pole moved, we just, you know, amongst other things, we just haven't gotten to it yet. But it's very much on the radar to improve that radius in one of the upcoming CIP projects.
Okay, but we've got, we've got an impact now of more cars coming in. I mean, 100, let's say 100 more parking spaces have been put on that, and I just think that it's a time to ask, we did that with Publix, the city didn't pay for that slip lane. We're not asking them to create a slip lane in, we're just asking this to be improved as a, in relation to this. And, and it's at the top of the street where people cannot come in and out because of it's so narrow. So is this a time to ask that besides the dedication?
Well, remember with both the Midtown Publix, I believe, and the Publix at Airport University, there were traffic impact studies associated with them, I believe, which would have identified improvements that would be recommended or necessary.
So you're saying that it would be best to ask for a traffic impact study?
That, I mean, that is typically how we identify what off-site improvements are needed. And not knowing, I mean, yes, they're adding parking spaces, but we don't know what was there. I mean, there's a significant amount of green space that they could have just been parking off-site. I don't know. And this application is really the first I'm aware of the growth at this location, but I, we could ask. It could be something small. It could be a little report, but I don't know that you're going to see, that they're going to say it needs a radius improvement, because that's not typically something you see. It's usually a capacity-type improvement, not a geometric improvement like that.
Okay. All right. I just, I was hoping that that 25-foot dedication meant that there could be a widening, especially at, at the intersection, because it's so very, very busy.
And, and, I think that's what I'm telling you, that, that's really already in the, in the pipeline. It's, again, we've spoke about this in the past, it's a, it's a little, it's a little project to improve the radius there, but there is a power pole that's got a guy wire that's making it. The dedication will make that much easier to accomplish and does make that little CIP project much easier to execute.
Question for staff. Are there landscape improvements associated with this particular application?
They would be required to put in landscaping trees, frontage trees, perimeter trees, and then trees for the number of new parking spaces that are being added to the site. So there would be some required landscaping.
Thank you.
Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Such an opportunity.
Item number 13, north side of Coca-Cola Road, Happy Campers RV Park subdivision. It's a subdivision and planning approval, tentative recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
And just a reminder, there are findings of fact associated with the planning approval as well.
And this RV, this, this is short-term? Obviously, because we wouldn't allow it to be any kind of long-term, to say.
Right, it is a transit, and because part of the property is within a flood zone, those spaces, they could not keep an RV there for more than 60 days without it being moved.
And who's going to monitor that?
FEMA.
Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval, subject to the findings of fact.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. That concludes deliberation.
You have one more.
It's been that long. Item number 14, 65 North Mobile Street, UMS Wright Corporation, so PUD and planning application, tentative recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
I move we approve, subject to staff recommendations, and adopt the findings of fact for the PUD.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Now that's all. Before we go, I do have a card from Richard I'd like to read to you guys. Says, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the retirement gift. I look forward to using it. Also, seeing so many of you at the retirement party, meant a lot to me. I have enjoyed working with each of you and have immense respect for you individually and collectively. I will miss seeing you at the meetings and surely reading my expressions like a book. Again, thank you with my warmest regards, Richard.
I have a question.
Ma'am?
Well, the gentleman that asked for it to be held over so that they could study the, you know, what was asked and passed on subdivisions, when there's been discussion here, y'all talk about Hunter's Ridge, I think, one place, it's the four different subdivisions that have Hunter's Ridge. So the original Hunter's Ridge was built prior to the 1990 program, but you also have
Yeah, that's the whole idea.
So, y'all would discuss those in separate, because Hunter's Ridge West
That's the way it will come across. Yeah, they'll each come across as which subdivisions were asked to do what, what percentage and how much.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.